The meeting is called to order. Good evening, everybody. Our invocation tonight will be given by Councilmember John Patino and that is followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Would you please bow our head? Let us pray. Dear Lord, as we gather here tonight to make decisions that will have an effect on all the lives of our citizens and to address issues and needs and goals of our city. Dear Lord, give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding and courage. By your power, dear Lord, may we embrace our future with a greater vision. Rest it to Christ, our Lord. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first agenda item is the report on our 50th Anniversary Committee and by the Chairman, Pat Davenport.
Thank you very much.
Pat, before you start, I want to express everyone's appreciation to you and to the entire committee for the fine job that you've done for this last year. You've done a great job.
Thank you. It took many people. Oh, thank you very much. It took many people to put this together, believe me. This was why I came before you tonight, was to tell you that we have completed our year celebration, which concluded on August the 5th and 6th. And it took all of you, the city staff, the parking wreck people, the fire department, and the police department to make this possible. And it also the citizens of our great city. And if it hadn't been for the cooperation and the participation, none of it would have been a success. And I want to thank all of y'all for helping too, besides our committee. So, I gave y'all all a packet, a little packet of our budget. And without the financial support from the city and from the businesses and from personal donations, we couldn't have put all these programs together. And if you kind of look through it, you will see that we were able to save money all the way through. A few things came out even, and there was a few programs that we put into our budget that was not in the regular budget, like the essay contest for the children of the Burville Schools. The library wanted us to do an author, but that fell through, so we just helped with the grand opening and then we purchased some of the cases for them. And so you'll see that toward the back page. And you can see that there were other things that were funded that were not budgeted, but we've been able to do these things and still save money. And as an outgrowth of this committee, I would like to see us have a veterans' wall placed out in the front of the city hall. I have not worked on the project yet because, as you know, we just completed our activities. And I know that it will probably have to be put out for bids or all, but I would like to do that with the rest of this money. And if we need more, maybe try to raise some money to do that. And that would be the outgrowth of our anniversary. And at this time, and if you have any questions, well, I'll let Betty answer.[266.64][266.64](Laughter). At this time, I'd like for Betty to come and make a presentation, if you don't mind.
Sure. As most of you know, we had a total of 13 events, and it was paid for with city money mostly. We were able to raise some money, but we weren't in the business of making money. So, for our last event, we had a two-day car show. And there was an entry fee for the car show. About three months ago, the committee was looking at possible donations to be made to a charity of some sort. And the committee chose the Rets Foundation. The car club that helped host our car show was the North Texas Streetcar Association. And one of their members has a granddaughter that's been diagnosed with Rets. And so the committee decided to donate all the proceeds from the car show to the Rets Foundation. And I have some of the members of that car club here tonight. If they would come up, I would like to present them with a check totaling the amount of the proceeds of the car show, which is $1,820. If you will come up, please. I would appreciate it. All the people at the car show, we're going to take a picture and give you this check. It's something the city council likes to see, so, don't you?[370.12][370.12](Laughter).
We've already got it slick.
You mean, instead of just taking your word for it?
Instead of taking our word for it. This is Renee. She's been diagnosed with Rets syndrome, and it is, I mean Christina, I'm sorry. You're Renee. The mother's Renee.
Turn around that way and let everybody face the camera back behind you, please.
Rets is a neurological disorder which, to date, has only occurred in girls. It was only first discovered in 1965. The studies that have been done to this point have proven that one in 12,000 to one in 15,000 live female births are contracted Rets syndrome. But at this time, the president of the club is Gary Birmingham, and he is here. And I'd like for you to step up here and take this check on behalf of the 50th Anniversary There's an envelope, if you'd like to have it. Would you like to say something? Richard was the DJ at our car show, and he would like to say something.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you very much on behalf of the car club and the Rets Foundation. We will be having a benefit car show for Rets on September the 30th. And if any of you folks would like to come down, we'd love to have you. We could announce it, but the citizens know and get you guys to take a bow if you'd show up. It's going to be down at the church, down at the International Face Center, 6:00 PM till 9:00 on the September the 30th. And we certainly like to thank you folks and the citizens of Halton City. It was a great car show. It really turned out great. I don't know, I know some of you folks did make it. We saw you down there, and our mayor was there, and it was a great event. Betty worked real hard.
Well, I had fun, but I tell you, it was really difficult trying to pick one car out of how many were there? How many actually registered?
I think there was, yeah, I believe there was 180.
Seemed like more.[514.01][514.01](Laughter).
Yeah, you had a tough job.
Yes, I did. But it was fun, and we thank you for your participation. I don't think it would have, we could have pulled it off without you.
Well, we really appreciate you folks allowing us to participate.
We had a lot of positive comments on a lot of our events, and a lot of people want to see some of these events again next year. So, I just wanted to give you a food for thought on that.
Yes, they do. I even had, the car people may not want to hear this, but we had people tell us that they really would like to see us do the car show again next year. So...
One day.
One day, and I agree. I agree. I think that would be good.
We got a lot of positive feedback from the park community also. The park setting was great. Everybody had good time with a lot of positive feedback.
Even though it was 124 degrees. Yes.
Do y'all have any questions? Anybody?
Any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number two is a report and update from the Arts Council of Northeast Tarrant County. Is there a representative here tonight? Not here. Okay. Then we'll move on to number three. And at this time, we would like to unveil the plan and the design for the Animal Shelter and Adoption Center. So, gentlemen, and Chuck, where is Mr. Kendrick? I hear them calling him. Mr. Scott, do you want to go ahead and begin?
Be glad to. Here's Chuck.
First, I'd just like to say how much we appreciate the opportunity to be your design architect on this project. It's an exciting project, especially for me, having grown up in Richland Hills, to be able to come back and get back to the community that I grew up in. And we designed the Richland Hills Animal Shelter, which has just opened recently.
I'm not sure you're close enough to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. I usually don't need a microphone, but I'd be glad to speak into it. What I'd like to review with you today, first, let me introduce my associate. This is Greg Conaway. He's a director at Randall Scott Architects, project director. And the two of us have been primarily responsible for the design and the drawings that you see here. What we have is a site plan, combination site plan and floor plan over here on my left. And then we have some proposed renovations of the front and the back sides of the facility. So what I'd like to do first is go through just kind of some of the overview of the plan, and you have some eight-and-a-half-by-eleven copies there in front of you as well. The plan is basically broken up into the public area, which is this area in the front, and then the service area and staff area, which is here in the back, and the Sallyport at the very rear of the building. The site that was selected is on Midway Road. As you can see, it's a very deep and not very wide site. It's very linear in its design. So we had to get as much impact out of the front of the building as fairly narrow as possible. I think we've achieved that a little bit with you in the renderings and the minutes. But the person would come, would park here. There's additional parking in the back of the site. There's additional parking in the back of the site, back here. But generally, a person would come off of Midway Road and park in one of these slots. If it's handicapped, that person would park here, come in the sidewalk, and come into the lobby here. And that, I'll go over with you just a little bit in the rendering. There's a reception area here where two people can sit. There's a glass-enclosed adoption area here, so that animals that are of particular beauty and interest, you can put out there, and it gives them a little better opportunity to be adopted. The animal control officer's office is back here with a glass window, so they can see what's going on in the front if they need to come and attend to someone, if the volunteers or whoever's manning the reception desk is not there. And there's some seating area, and then there's a public restroom. Between that and the staff kennel area back here, there's a vestibule, or you might call it a Sallyport for the animals, so that if an animal does get loose back in the kennel area, it's enclosed in this vestibule and can't get out into the public area. Then back in the kennel area, there are 32 kennels back here. They're four-by-eight types kennels, and they have a raiseable door. I'm not sure that's the right, that's probably not a real word, but a door that you can raise by pulling down on a rope. Yeah, we were asked not to use the word guillotine on that.
Yes, you were.
That's what it is called. But anyway, the ones that are here in the middle that are back-to-back, the door can be raised, the animal can be kind of shooed to the other side, and then the staff person can wash it down. And then they can go to the other side and move the animals back to this side, do the same thing. It's sort of cutting-edge, it's state-of-the-art, and that's what we used over at Richland Hills. It's working out real well for them.
Can you turn it a little bit? I was going to, yeah, I was going to ask him to turn it so that you could see it as soon as he finished this one presentation.
Okay.[856.82][856.82](Laughter). Anyway, there are, the staff areas are storage, food prep, food storage and storage. One of the things that we did learn from Richland Hills in our research in doing animal shelters is that you can never have enough storage in one. So we provided quite a few there. There are 18 kept kennels in this area, and actually can be expanded up to over 20, over 20, over 30, actually. And then there's a euthanasia area here that leads out to the incinerator, and there's a quarantine area here for animals that may have a disease or suspected to have a disease. And it'll be on a separate air conditioning system, so that those airborne diseases can't get tied into the rest of the kennel. And then this is a drive-through Sallyport. Originally, we did not have a drive-through Sallyport. We made some modifications to the plan after it was requested by the city staff, so that you can come in, close the doors on both ends, open the animal control officer's vehicle, get an animal out, bring them in either to the kennel area or through the euthanasia or quarantine area. There's doors to each one of those areas off the Sallyport. And then there's a turnaround, more parking, and back out. This area up in the front is represented by this entrance. These are the parking spaces that I mentioned previously, where a person would get out of their car, come up the sidewalk, and this would be the entrance, which is here. So, there's quite a bit of glass there, which creates a friendly relationship with your citizens who are driving along Midway Road. And then we popped up the ceiling area and brought in some clerestory windows in the public area, which would be right along here. So that brings in some nice natural light into the top, gives a little bit of volume. Yet it's not a large portion of the structure. It's a very small portion that we brought and popped out. And then this is the animal control officer's office on the backside. This is the kennel area, and we've used a, we've used some fairly inexpensive materials on the outside, primarily brick and some corrugated metal. Corrugated metal referring back to, historically back to animal or barn type issues, but there's very little of that. There's just hints of it here, here, and on this element here, which is basically this wall. The rest of it is brick, and we're using a standing seam barrel-vaulted roof with clerestory windows here and on the backside, which would be here. This is the kennel area, this large area with the barrel vault. This is the quarantine area, and then this is the Sallyport. So...
Mr. Scott, if you would, would you turn those plans around a little bit so that the audience can see them before they have a little fit here? I can see you're going to have a fit. The animal control board did approve these plans.
I think it's actually quite an exciting design. It's one that's really pretty much on the leading edge in terms of design, forethought. The two-thirds barrel vault is really out there on the leading edge of design right now, and I think it will really, it'll make the city of Halton City a good neighbor to the folks. And one of the things that was brought up in the animal control, or the animal shelter board meeting is that it will help to maybe revitalize that area down in that part of Halton City, which they really expressed an interest in doing. And we're interested in doing that as architects. Are there any questions that I can answer about it?
Any questions, council? Councilmember Patino?
Yes, sir. This animal shelter, is this strictly for dogs and cats?
It's primarily for dogs and cats, but they can handle other, they can handle other than that.
Do you have any provision for maybe goats? Because I know we have some goats in the city.
There are, there is an outdoor, outdoor area where they could, that's fenced in. It's really intended to be an exercise area for the animals that are in the kennel. But I'm sure a goat could be kept in one of the, in the kennel. They're four feet by eight feet by six feet tall, the dog kennels are. So keeping a goat in there wouldn't be a problem, or they could put it in the fenced area in the back.
I guess my last question is, on the landscaping, do we presently have any shade trees there? Big shade tree?
Most of the shade trees are in the southwest corner, and they are large.
Would they be able to offer some shade to this building for the future?
They are really, they are shown down in that southwest corner, but they're really, they're really too far from the building to shade the building much.
Is there any provision to plant any for the future shade?
Yes, sir. We have indicated some, we have indicated, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. We have indicated some trees on the site. We'll have to see how far the budget stretches as far as landscaping and irrigation. And at this, at this point, we're not quite there as far as determining how much of that will be able to be spent on landscaping.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As liaison of the animal control board, I was privileged to see this plan the other night at our meeting, and I just want to get in line to make a motion when you get ready for that.
Councilmember Williams?
I'm second in line.
Councilmember Jennings?
Are you ready?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we accept the plan designs as presented to the city council in this evening's meeting.
Councilmember Williams?
And add, Mr. Jennings, this is part of the quarter cent sales tax that we had earlier in the year, and we promised to bring this to the citizens, and here it is. That's wholeheartedly for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Mr. Patino? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. What's the next step? Mr. Scott?
If we have approval of the council and the board, we can complete the rest of the drawings in approximately 90 days. And about 30 days after that, we can have bids in, and we could conceivably start turning dirt as early as four and a half to five months.
I would like to request that the staff kind of keep their eye on what's happening as far as the budget is concerned, if at all possible, to put in some irrigation. I hate to think of planting the first blade of grass or anything else here without irrigation.
Sure.
So if you would kind of keep them apprised of that, I'd appreciate it.
That would be our desire as well. We'll do our best to squeeze enough money out to make them happen.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One quick question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
What's the construction time on that, sir?
The one in Richland Hills was slated for six months. This one's about twice the size of that, and it took about, it took about eight, really honest with you. This one should not take more than eight. It's conceivable it could be done in seven. Just depends on the quality of the contractor that we get.
So we can move in the middle of April?
We're looking twelve.
About a year from now, I would say.
Yeah, it's going to be twelve months, thirteen months.
Yeah, I would think about 12 months. Somewhere in August of 2001. Should be about that.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, council? Okay. Our next agenda item is our consent agenda, and it, let's see, it entails agenda item number 14 through 16. And agenda item number 14 has been removed for separate discussion and a motion. So I would be in line for a motion, council. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we pass a consent agenda with the exception of item number 14.
Councilmember Hanserling?
That's for a second, Madam Mayor.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 14 concerns some exciting things that are going to be happening in the southern part of our town. And our engineer, Greg Van Yunhus, is going to come out and give you some information on this. Mr. Eisen, would you like to say something first?
Just by way of introduction, I think most everyone in the community is aware that we are undergoing at this time a joint study with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to develop ways to deal with some flooding issues along Little Fossil Creek. One of the issues that's come out of that is that there is an opportunity to, along with the Corps of Engineers, make some recreation improvements along the course of the project, which would be funded half by the city and half by the Corps. And that's what the council was being able, being asked to consider this evening as to whether or not you would be willing to participate in those costs. We do have some data and some figures available for you on estimated cost, but at that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Van Yunhus and ask him for any comments he'd like to make in addition to that.
As part of the study of Little Fossil Creek in the south part of town, for the Corps to be involved with the project or for federal funding to be involved on the project, the Corps requires that for every acre of dirt that we disturb, that we mitigate four acres, somewhere around one to four is the ratio. There's this lake area in the south part of town that's roughly, the water area's about 20 acres, with another 20 acres around it, which amounts to 40 acres, which is just around the area. We're looking at disturbing around 10 acres. So the Corps has told us that that looks like that would be an adequate site for us to have the mitigation area. One of the nice features of this area is somewhat of a natural pond. We estimate from previous maps that this pond is somewhere around eight or nine foot deep. The Corps likes this area. They have indicated that what they would like is an area of both deep wetlands and shallow wetlands. So they're allowing us to use some of the fill from the project into this lake, so that we can have, actually split the lake in half, have a deep area and a shallow area that will support various types of aquatic habitat, aquatic wildlife. Along this lake area, they will enter into an agreement with us where if we make it a park-like setting, as well as the rest of the project, that they will fund up to 50% of the improvements that we make to the area. What we are considering is that for most of the trail alongside, or potential trail alongside Little Fossil Creek, for the trail to be eight to 10 foot wide and have it concrete, something fairly durable that you ride bikes on, something that would be rather low maintenance. However, around this, this park area, this lake in the south part of town, the Corps has asked that we use something more native, something that wouldn't destroy the environment, something like wood chips for the trail around the lake. With that in mind, we thought we'd take this to you, let you see what we'd be looking at it for cost, and get your approval on such an endeavor. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I don't see any. Thank you. We would be in line for a motion then on agenda item number 14. Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and accept this offer from the Corps engineer.
Thank you. Councilmember Everett?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. And in case I confused you, when I mentioned what the consent agenda entailed, it was items number four through 16, with the exception of 14. And I think I said 14 through 16. Our next agenda item is a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
This is a public hearing on a replat of a piece of property located on the west side of Rita Lane, just south of Broadway Avenue. Purpose of the replat is to divide an existing lot into two lots for the purposes of building two single-family homes.
I'll now open this public hearing. Is the applicant present? Do you wish to address the council, Mr. Hedgecall?
I'll be glad to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience speaking, wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone against? Then I'll close the public hearing and move on to the corresponding ordinance. Council, we'd be in line for a motion. Councilmember Hanserling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd make the motion that we approved plat P-036-99.
Councilmember Patino?
That's for a second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number 18 is for a final plat and is also a public hearing.
Thank you again, Mayor. As you've indicated, this is a final plat on a piece of property located at the northeast corner of Airport Freeway and Halton Road. Purpose of the replat is to accommodate the construction of a gas station, a convenience store. I might mention as an aside that when this issue was considered by the Planning and Zoning Commission, a suggestion was made to the applicant that there might be some way for the city to work with the applicant to, for the city, so that the city could place a "Welcome to Halton City Monument" type sign on the edge of the property in conjunction with some of the landscaping that the applicant would be doing. And he's indicated he's agreeable to working with us on that. So hopefully sometime soon, in conjunction with the development of the project, we'll also have a new entryway sign to the city at this location.
Thank you. I'll open this public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Thank you. Do you want to address the council or just be available?
Yeah.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak for this agenda item? Anyone wishing to speak against? Then I'll close the public hearing, and we'd be ready for a motion. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve P-01400.
Councilmember Hurley?
I'd like to have a second there.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Agenda item number 19 is also a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
Thank you again, Mayor. This piece of property is located on Midway Road, the north side of Midway Road, about 400 feet west of Carson Street. The proposed zoning change is from C3 commercial zoning to SF2 single-family zoning. Just brief history on the project, there was a formerly single-family home on this property which burned approximately three years ago. The owners of the property at this point would like to rebuild that home, but cannot do so because of the current non-conforming status as a result of that. It is necessary to rezone the property to a single-family zoning district, hence the request for SF2, which is a single- request for SF two, which is a single-family district.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing. Is the applicant present?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Do you want to address the council?
I'll, I'll open for questions or whatever.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone speaking against? If not, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance number zero dash two thousand dash zero two seven dash fifteen.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I have a question for staff and I understand our zoning coordinator is not here tonight and our engineer's gonna set in for him. Really don't know if this is a fair question for you or not, Greg, but it did come up and I'd like to ask, the appro, the item on the agenda for tonight has been recommended for approval by P and Z, is that correct?
Yes.
And was the staff recommendation also for approval?
I'm not sure what the staff recommendation was.
Well, I believe that staff recommended approval on Z zero one zero double oh and it is against the CLUP and they recommended denial on Z double oh seven double oh because it was not in compliance with the CLUP. And I was just attempting to get a little clarification here, why they would recommend approval on one against the land use plan and, and recommend denial on the other, being that both were against the land use plan. Told you it's an unfair question.
It's, and it's, I'm not just very familiar with Z double oh seven, which is the property, I believe, further west on Midway on the south side of the street. I'm fairly familiar with this property. I know that this property was shown on our comprehensive land use plan to be a different category than what the structure on site was, which is similar to the other one. I do know that on this one, that the individuals whose house burned, from the time it burned, they were in the process of trying to get a building permit, try to go through the process to get the structure reestablished. However, due to our ordinances, our interpretations at that time, we couldn't find a way to do them, do that without rezoning the property. I'm not sure what the surrounding zoning is on the other property on Z double oh seven. I can tell you on this one, similar to Z double oh seven, it is right on the borderline where you change from a zoning category to another one. Z double oh seven, I believe, is, is right where you have commercial and in the zoning map or the future land use plan shows the west of it being residential. Where this is the same thing, you have this spot that's residential structure on a commercial, shown to be commercial lot, where on one side you have all commercial or more dense zoning and on the west side you have all residential. And this is right on the borderline, there was a residential structure. It seems to me that perhaps, I don't want to use the term gray area, but perhaps that's exactly what this is. It's right on the border, it may not make a difference whether it goes commercial or residential. It's always had a residential structure on it, the owner would still like to continue to have a residential structure on it. Seems to me to make some sense to, being that to the west of it and the north of it, you already have residential zoning. I don't think, I would think that the land use plan would be flexible enough to allow this.
You've answered my question, thank you.
All right, I have a motion on the floor. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Mayor, I've got a question for Mr. Van Uenhus. I see on the, on the night they had this before the P and Z, they voted unanimously on this, which they meant the entire board voted unanimously to go against the comprehensive land use package.
Mm-hmm.
That's right. It shows up here that we had one in opposition. I believe I was sitting here that night, but you know, you remember who the opposition was or, or what the opposition was or does? I must not have been. I don't remember, I don't remember it. Do you remember who was in opposition?
Just, did you ever send the letter and just said they wanted it to remain the same? And that's all they said. So they couldn't count it one way or the other, as that is what they said.
Okay. Well, I didn't remember that and that's the reason I'd ask the question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanserling? Are you wishing to second this?
I have a, I have a question for the city engineer. Don't worry about it. You're getting to know this case pretty well, aren't you?
More than I'd like to.
One thing, I was looking, Councilmember Jennings had referenced a zoning case, Z zero zero seven. Were you referencing something in this document for this particular case?
No, C double oh seven is a, is a document that was before us, two weeks ago, four weeks ago.
Okay, okay.
Having to do with M two zoning.
Okay.
And I was just noting that the staff recommended denial on that based on the grounds that it was against the CLUP and, but I noticed that they were recommending approval here and it is against the CLUP. I was just wondering if there was a reason for it.
One question I do have regarding this particular case, do you have any idea, Greg, as far as why we weren't pursuing modifying the CLUP before we're gonna be voting on a zoning change?
No, I can't tell you that. Updating the entire comprehensive land use plan is a priority with the planning department. Perhaps at this point in time, there seem to be a few of these situations where the zoning that's being recommended before you is not in compliance with the comprehensive land use plan. It could be perhaps that the planning department is waiting to take a look overall at the whole city. I used the term gray area previously. It seems like these specific areas are probably areas that we're gonna want to look at in the, in the future and perhaps, you know, make some changes to our land use plan where they're not so rigid in these areas, if it makes sense. If you have an established neighborhood, it's gonna stay that way or, or established commercial area to get some latitude.
Greg, if I can add to your comments on some of the reasoning that may have been involved and why this might be different than the case a few weeks ago, I think one of the factors that was considered by the person who wrote the reports on both of these issues was that here you have a circumstance where you have a residential use that was a residential use before and the likelihood of a residential use having any kind of a negative impact on other residential uses or other commercial uses in the area is pretty slim, where on the other hand, depending on what might go into an industrial zone, the likelihood that that could have an effect on residential properties in the area is a little bit different situation. And I think those were some of the factors that were taken into account at the time the reports were written, although both of them have been written some time ago.
I'm done. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Having voted for Z double oh seven double oh in the past against the comprehensive land use plan and in compliance with the zoning commission, I would have to vote for approval of this particular item even though it is also against the CLUP. My reasoning for this would be that this is a, this is a piece of property that is, that is not of the norm, as I felt like Z double oh seven double oh was not. I feel like the CLUP is a guide, it is not etched in stone and it is five years old and it is time to revisit that. I feel like nothing would be gained by turning this particular item down, so I would like to second the motion.
And Councilmember Markham, do I assume that after all the conversation, you still, your motion still stands?
Motion still stands.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Councilmember Williams?
Got one question for the attorney. Counselor, in view of this, what the item is brought up and this being against the package, do we, do we stand any kind of litigation or anything against this or are we gonna be liable for doing this without this being amended or? I know the last time we did this, two or four weeks ago, we came out in the paper that we had really done wrong and I don't wanna, I don't want slow progress, I want the gentleman to get that house rebuilt and get something constructed back down there.
Right. Councilmember Williams, I can't help you with the papers and what they might say, but as I explained to you last time, whenever you consider zoning, you have to take into consideration your comprehensive land use plan. It's not, it's not just a piece of paper. You have to consider what it says and you have to respect the comprehensive land use plan. If the council, after reviewing the land use plan and its goals and looking in particular at this area, determines that this is appropriate zoning, then you have the right to rezone this property even though your land use plan, which was adopted five years ago, may have designated it for a different type of use. So yes, this is defensible zoning if, after taking into consideration all the elements of the land use plan, you still think this is the most appropriate use of the property.
In view of that, with the layout of that property down there and the unique way that it's formed, I'll be voting in favor of this.
Councilmember Hanserling?
Well, I think it's important that everybody be consistent here and I think, I want to be consistent on this as well. I realize this is a different situation than when we, what we heard previously and I think the city manager did a good job informing us as to differences. I'm, I don't want to overly second guess what Karen Mitchell, our previous planning and zoning administrator, what her logic here was, but I think it's important for me that I be consistent as well and I'll, I think it's important that we adhere to the consistency of the way we've been handling zoning cases in the past in terms of modifying the plan first and then approving the zoning. So I feel it's important that I be consistent and based on that, I'm gonna vote for denial of the case.
Please register your vote. Motion passes with Councilmember Hanserling voting against. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number twenty-one is also a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
This is also a zoning case. The proposed zoning change is from single-family, or to single-family to SF two from the duplex zoning district. The purpose of the rezoning is to provide for, accommodate the construction of a single-family home.
Thank you. I'll now open this public hearing and I see the applicant is present. Are you here for questions or do you wish to address the council?
Yes, the only thing we're trying to do is to just be consistent and be allowed to rebuild a single-family residence and the duplex zoning wouldn't allow that and that's the purpose for the rezoning request. I'd be glad to answer any other questions, Madam.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak for this agenda item? Anyone speak against? If not, then I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on to the corresponding ordinance. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move that we pass ordinance number zero dash two thousand dash zero two eight dash fifteen.
Thank you. Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Our next agenda item is the Visitors and Citizens Forum and I have no speaker's cards this evening, so we'll move on to announcements and events. Council? Councilmember Williams?
Okay. Betty Nims stole my thunder on the car show, so I won't get to take fifteen minutes on that.
You're right.
I would like to remind the business owners, August the twenty-fourth at W.G. Thomas Coliseum, we're gonna have the Business Appreciation Luncheon. We'll invite everybody that got a deal to be sure and get back with the city secretary and they know that you're coming, would be looking very forward to seeing you there. And I do want to just shortly say on the fiftieth anniversary, yeah, that I appreciate everybody that helped out this year, not only on the car show but all thirteen events and I'm glad that we have a lot of citizens that like to put their input and work, put their endeavors together and it was a very good success and my final words on it is happy birthday, Holton City.
Any other announcements, council? I'd like to remind you and everyone that tomorrow evening, right here, we will canvass the election and we'll, we will meet at six fifteen P.M. Agenda item number twenty-three is a ward of bid for the Fire Services Board. Was the chairman, Mr. Davenport, were, did you want to speak about this? No, okay.
After you pass.
After you pass? Okay. All right, Mr. Eisen?
At the council's last meeting, Mr. Davenport, who's chairman of the Fire Citizens Committee, had asked the council to authorize the funding for purchase of a fire safety house, which is a, a house that's used to train young people, kids and what to do in the event of a fire in their home. The council at that time authorized going out for bids. We've done that, two bids have been received. The low bid, taking into account some of the add-ons that the fire department felt necessary, was in the amount of, I don't have the number in front of me, but approximately twenty-one thousand dollars and we'd recommend that that low bid be adopted. It was how much?
Twenty-six eleven.
Twenty-one six eleven, thank you.
There it goes, right there.
And that's for Mobile Concepts by Scotty, is the name of the company.
By Scotty. Right. Council? Councilmember Williams?
We borrowed one of these for Spring Fest earlier in the year and we got lots of good reviews, man. It's a very good tool. Mr. Davenport had showed us the plans on it the other night. It shows how children can, you can educate them on getting out of the house. You can do it with FIMs, you can do it with a chalkboard and you can do it with a school teacher, but when you get a building, an actual structure that they can get in and you can show them and, and show them where the smoke and how it's gonna affect the house and how they can get down and crawl and find safety, I'll be ready to make a motion on this whenever you're ready. I'm in full support of this.
I believe we're ready.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Mobile Concepts bid of twenty-one thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and I'd like this, this underway and back here as soon as possible and we're looking at about a hundred days.
Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion and a second, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Davenport? You have a meeting tomorrow evening, right, your Fire Services Board? Well, you'll have some good news for them. Agenda item number twenty-four concerns a drainage study on Saucer Drive. Mr. Eisen?
I think I'll call upon Mr. Van Uenhus again to talk with you a little bit about the details, but just by way of reminder to those present, a couple or three meetings ago, some citizens appeared before you expressing some concern about flooding conditions on Saucer Drive. You had asked the city engineer to do some analysis on that. He did some initial review and based upon that, you had asked to have the issue looked at a little bit further. The firm of Teak Nolan Perkins has done that and we have a report for you this evening on the outcome of that review.
Well, at least you're not alone, Greg. You have backup right now.
This is Greg as well. Greg, number two. With the study that you have before you, I also passed out a, a map of the affected area. The gentlemen on Saucer Drive also have a map as well. Is there anyone else in the audience that needs a map? Do we have any extras down? I'll make extras for them after the meeting. I think the rest went up there. As you can see, there are four main areas that the engineering firm of Teak Nolan Perkins was looking at in doing this study. The areas are labeled A, B, C, and D. The intent is for the residents to achieve the full benefit, is to do all four at once, to do A, B, C, and D. However, if it was the council's desire to kind of step into this program, it makes sense to do A, then to do B or do A and B and then C later and then D. There are a couple of caveats to that, while A must really be done first with B second, because of the way C and D are, we can flip-flop those. But with that in mind, the estimate from Teak Nolan Perkins is about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for construction and final engineering plans. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or, unless Mr. Saunders would like to add anything.
Mr. Saunders?
Very good.
Do you even want to add anything at this point?
Not right now.
All right. Councilmember Hurley?
I've got a question about doing Phase A of this thing, first to give some relief up there and is this something that would have to be contracted out or is this capable of, by city staff, the city equipment?
This is something that the city could do. Currently, the, the city's division that does the drainage work is also the division that does street maintenance. There, there's, I believe, six gentlemen in this division, so the division is fairly small, but due to the type of work that's required, this is something that city forces could do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I don't choke today first.
Please do.
As I see this, Greg, this, this has no bearing whatsoever on the reconstruction of Old Denton Road. Would I be correct in that? That is not part of any portion of this particular project, A, B, C, or D.
What you have in front of you is not. However, I would like to point out that there are some pipes that this plan proposes to go underneath Old Denton Road. So it may make some sense with the reconstruction of Old Denton Road to at least put these pipes in at that time, perhaps even put in this entire system with the...
We spoke in pre-council about the possibility of Old Denton Road being higher on our list of street repairs than some other streets in the city. I'm also familiar with McLean Road, which is just south of there, which is also a main entrance into the industrial park and, and a main exit to Beach Street. Can you tell me, based on what you know, is, is McLean and Old Denton Road right together on this or are they far apart or they at opposite ends of the street repair schedule?
They're very close to each other.
Very close to each other.
Right.
So it would be possible that were we to, at, at some time in the near future... So it would be possible that were we to, at, at some time in the near future, elect to reconstruct streets, that those two streets might be at the top of the list or in the, in the vicinity of that?
In fact, I believe prior to you being on city council, we submitted a grant application through the COG for, through T-21, the federal highway bill, to get McLean funded. However, uh, the, the criteria that's used in, in for cities to receive this money, McLean didn't fare very well. But it is our, we are actively looking for ways to get McLean reconstructed. It was our hopes with the last bond program to fund the reconstruction of Old Denton Road and/or McLean. However, our bond program, I believe the voters voted on it in 95 and we actually sold bonds in 97 or 98, which was at the peak of construction. So the cost of construction, specifically concrete construction, was a lot more than what was originally anticipated.
One other question. Part B of this particular plan, uh, would this have to do with the railroad? Would this be a, a portion that would, that you would get some participation from the railroad in or is this a, is everything that you've prevented, presented here at the cost to the city, is that, is that taking into consideration any participation from the railroad?
I haven't dealt with this railroad specifically, but other roads I've dealt with in, in both this city and other cities, is a railroad will not participate in the cost. In fact, the railroad will, in the past, require us to, to obtain a permit. Those permits are typically $500 to $2,000. We will have to have all construction plans approved by their staff prior to us being a law.
So this is on Texas and Pacific property then? This is not on city property?
I believe it's the...
I think it's Union Pacific now.
Union Pacific, okay. All right, that's all of my questions, thank you.
Railroads generally have a tendency to feel like they were there first, which they usually were.
Yes.
So anything that goes wrong is somebody else's fault. Councilmember Patino?
Yes, Mr. Van Hughes and our, maybe the engineer. Uh, there's presently is a drainage there just north of the, of Denton Highway. Uh, is this, will be intended to cover it up? Cause the drainage is coming in from Saucer. It's gonna go under Denton.
Oh. The ditch between Old Denton Road and the, and the railroad?
No, no. Opposite.
Between the houses? On the opposite side? That stays for this, at this time? That stays in place?
Well, once these drains are connected from Saucer and Knowledge, uh, the water from that drainage is not gonna, have nowhere to go.
Well, it would, it would still have to go down...
It's still gonna connect it with the...
Where the old twenty-one crosses. Cause right now, there is a gap in that whole pipe, in that little ditch. What we do is leave that gap for the backyards drain into this small ditch and get to that point, but...
No, there will be a way that we'll link into the channel.
You'd have to leave it, leave it, leave it a way to get through.
It would, Mr. Patino, it'd be carrying a lot less water. If you see the drainage system that's being proposed in Knowledge, the 24, 42, and 48-inch pipe, that currently, the water that, that's being proposed to pick up is currently trying to go down that ditch that you mentioned. What we're trying to do is intercept it, bring it immediately underneath Old Denton Road onto the other side, so that drainage ditch that you're talking about would nearly have to carry as much water. In effect, it would only be carrying the water that runs off from the backyard of those properties that back up to that ditch.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hanselring?
Greg, I want a couple of questions for you. You mentioned in pre-council that this original area, it was probably prior to a lot of the development that went on, that was probably designed for a two- or three- or five-year type situation?
I'm not sure if there were specific design standards at those ti- at that time. Now, looking back with what we have with our charts, we can tell that based on the conditions that are out there today, it was, when, it, it will handle the two-to-five-year design storm. It might have been designed at that time for a 10- or 25-year storm, however, if the, it might have been designed for an undeveloped 25-year storm. Now this area is developed, we can look back in hindsight and see that it's only capable of carrying the two-to-five-year present-day rain event.
Once all four phases are done, we're shooting for a 25-year situation. Is that the goal?
Well, actually, this one, we're down in a sump. Everything's trying to get to this, to the, basically the Saucer and easy coffee area.
Right.
Uh, so our requirements actually go up to 100-year to get the sump cleared.
Okay.
Cause you wanna be able to get rid of the 100-year in the low spot. And so that, it's a little bit bigger because of that.
Sounds good.
The railroad also requires you, when you construct culverts underneath it, to be able to carry the 100-year, cause the railroad doesn't want to take the chance of the 100-year topping the tracks.
You bet. Um, out of the four options, of course, gotta go in order here, A through D, do you have a feel for how many years per option we're looking at? And if we do in-house Phase A, do you have an estimate of how much improvement we're gonna have to the situation here?
Phase A provides, while it provides additional relief, I'm not even sure if it's gonna provide much noticeable relief. Maybe Greg could comment.
A by itself won't do really anything within the neighborhood. It gives the water a place to go before it got to the railroad, but the system within the neighborhood is just so inadequate that, uh, the water's still gonna back up in there.
Okay, so we're really probably not gonna see much of a noticeable improvement.
No.
I guess what I was trying to quantify with the different phases, A was 23,000, B was 64, C was 84, and D was 70. I was trying to get a flavor for what, what amount of impact are we talking about as we go through these different phases? I mean, are we not gonna see any really major benefit until we spend $250,000 and get it all done?
To the residents, you'd, I think you'd see, again, C and D could flip. You could do D first and then C and you'd see a noticeable difference.
Okay.
But I think you need to do A, B, and at least one of those other ones before you're gonna see any benefits in the neighborhood. Probably actually go ahead and make D. Go ahead, take it out of order and make C last.
Okay. And if we do some of this work, I think it was asked before, we're not gonna go back and rework anything. This is not gonna be wasted money once we do Old Denton and McLean.
We'd have to take Old Denton into account and incorporate Old Denton Road design with this.
But we're not, we're not wasting...
We wouldn't throw any of this away, right? You wouldn't be throwing any of the drainage system, the drainage structure would be designed
so that when Old Denton Road in the future gets reconstructed, you wouldn't have to modify it further. However, I don't want to mislead you, you will have to tear up Old Denton Road, put in this drainage structure, put it back, and then you will be reconstructing that same area, but except for those areas where the drainage system crosses it, no, you wouldn't be doing something twice.
Okay. And the last question I have here is regarding funding and either Greg or the last not able to answer that. Do we have some money left in our drainage budget this year left? Are we still, are we looking for next year as far as...
Our drainage budget is substantially less than this dollar figure and if it's the council's desire to go forward, even though the budget's completed, I have some thoughts on how we can work that in and we can certainly cover those issues Friday and Saturday. But basically, just in a nutshell, we have some small amounts of additional debt that we're going to have to issue this year to, along with funds that are already on hand, be able to complete our portion of Broadway Avenue. And what I would suggest we do is add to that whatever amount of this work that you want to do at this particular point in time. It would have a, a less of an impact on the upcoming budget, but the cost of it would be spread out over several years and you would have some interest costs that you wouldn't have otherwise.
I think that's something I'm interested in because, you know, this is just one piece of the overall city budget that we've got a plan for and $250,000 is a big chunk of change and we need to look at it smartly. So I guess Friday and Saturday will be an opportunity to do that. Thank you.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, Greg, I just got one more question. As I was sitting here, I'm looking at this drawing. Once we get this water onto the railroad and we clean the creek, as it says here, do we have adequate drainage past that point? I mean, going in under, under Houghton Road and...
Yes.
Past that? I mean, there won't be no problem?
In fact, we have three 66-inch diameter pipes underneath Houghton Road, so, and Greg has gone out and evaluated that as well. So we're fine. The, the area that you see here is what needs to be improved. Now, the rest of the downstream drainage area can't handle the water.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from counsel? Ken has just brought me up a speaker's card from Mr. Markham and normally, these are supposed to be turned in before the meeting, but you've just been so wet so many times, I wouldn't have the heart to turn you down, so please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record, please, Mr. Markham.
My name is Mike Markham and I live at 4928 Saucer and I was, I'm sorry that I didn't get that turned in in time. I was talking to Greg and trying to get some clarification on the, on the plan that they had, had put out. My concern is, and back in 89, when we got water in our house, it was very severely, Mr. Slovak removed a tree east of the railroad track. One tree. And that freed up tremendous amount of water flow. So they've got cleaning the creek out east of, east of the railroad track in, in Part B. I think that could be done in-house immediately. The railroad, the, the large railroad ditch could be cleaned out immediately. There is, there is so much brush in there, water can't flow down it. Even if you could get water in it, it's not gonna flow down it.
Where is that second one you mentioned, Mr. Markham?
The, the large ditch that runs alongside the railroad track, the, the item A that you're talking about, the one that they're gonna concrete?
Okay.
That, cleaning it out is not gonna affect whether you, whether you concreted or not. The, 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 the ditch that was backfilled by the city in 85 and 86 can be cleaned out immediately east of the railroad track. Uh, there's tremendous amount of brush, railroad ties, things like that in there that's not supposed to be in there. Uh, the, the existing pipe that goes from Saucer to the little ditch on, on Old Denton Road needs to be replaced immediately. Every time it rains, Mr. Smith gets water in his house, right now. And that is in, within, within D. That could be put in and then stubbed off at the little ditch if nothing else, but I think it could be taken all the way across and not interfere with any of the work that's being done. Those things could be done right now to give us some alleviation of 11 years of frustration in this area. And that's, I mean, that, that's gonna tear up their A, B, C, and D structure, but we need some, we need some relief. And we need it before the spring, spring rains next year. Please.
Uh, don't go away, Mr. Markham. Do either one of you gentlemen have something to say to address what Mr. Markham has just pointed out?
We could, as I mentioned to Mr. Hurley, I think, who asked the question, we could clean out the ditches in-house. One clarification, we weren't gonna concrete the ditches, we were gonna clean them out and reshape them. However, the ditch that's in the railroad right away, because it's in the railroad right away, will require a full set of engineering plans. They will, we will have to get their approval. It's not just a matter of starting up the grade all tomorrow and going out there. It is quite a lengthy process.
Greg, are you talking, excuse me? May I?
Yes.
Are you talking that, to say that before we could do Project A, cleaning out the ditch that parallels the railroad, we would have to have a set of engineering plans and everything else approved by the railroad before we could do it?
We will have to have plan and profile sheet showing exactly what's there now and how we plan on reshaping it, yes.
Before we could do anything at all?
Correct. If it's in there right away. Now, the area between Old Denton Road and the backyards, you know, that, that's in our right of way, that we wouldn't have to.
That's due approval.
Now, really, in the, in the outline Mr. Markham laid out here, he's really not out of, uh, order with the lai- with the way it's laid out here, except he's gone, you know, B and A together right now with the D. And the only thing he's left out of that scenario is putting the new box culverts under the railroad. So, I mean...
What I was thinking, I was, was giving him some relief up there because if this ditch is cleaned out through normal percolation in an average rainfall, they're not gonna be flooded if they get the water out. And I was thinking something that the city staff could do based on their schedule.
Just what that will, will not do is take care of that, that pipe that is just way too small for the house that gets water every time it rains. I don't think you'll see that improve without the interior systems.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hurley, can I assume you're ready for your light to be off? I can get it, I can get it. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for you, Greg. From the point of some type of approval until the time that you get the authorization from the railroad on item A, what kind of timeframe are you talking about here?
I'm gonna guess two months.
One to two months.
Right.
That wouldn't be unacceptable had we been talking about the last two months. My problem here that I see is, they don't have a problem right now. Uh, it's not raining right now, but it sounds to me like every time it does rain, uh, there's one gentleman at least that, that has water in his house. If that were my house, I would be doing everything in my power to, to try to get a little relief too. So I understand your frustration and if you've waited 11 years to get something done, well, then I think you've waited long enough. I'm, I'm very encouraged by our city manager's offer to, to attempt to pull a rabbit out of a hat again. He does that quite often for us and I appreciate it. Uh, and I would also be receptive to any creative financing that we could use to, to fund a project like this, but I, I would like to be able to, as part of, when we discuss this at budget time, I would, I'd certainly like to be able to do anything, anything that we can do is better than doing nothing at all. So I would like to get as much as we can get done accomplished and whether that means taking, you know, we're talking A, B, C, and D here. Well, I see 28 items under there and if we can pull item number seven out of B and get that done, and we can pull number 17 out of C and get that done, uh, I think anything that we can do to alleviate the possibility of some of this water backing up, then I think we should do it, provided that we do it in a cost-effective manner. And I agree with Gene, I don't think we need to go back and be redoing anything, so I think we need to put a little thought into this, but I would, I would be for getting these people some relief as quickly as possible and I understand that we have to find the funds to do that with, but I would like for that to be part of our discussion in, in budget Friday and Saturday if at all possible.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I didn't mind yielding the floor to Mr. Hurley then, since it's his birthday, I'll give him one, one gift. Y'all be sure and tell Mr. Hurley happy birthday. Uh, Mr. Eisen, I guess what I was gonna ask you, we, uh, beautification board is very aware of this piece of property up here along the railroad because when we do our cleanup every year, this is one of the pieces of property that we come by and this is a piece of property, uh, we had a truck and had about a fourth way loaded down Denton Highway and by the time we got back up Old Denton Road, we had it overloaded and had to get another truck.
We forgot to ask the railroad.
And I'm terrified, my heart goes out to the railroad that we didn't ask them that we could clean the trash off their property, but I was wondering if maybe one afternoon someone could just happen by there with a maintainer and just kinda shove stuff from one end to the other, would the railroad get upset about that as far as the rubbish? I know what Mr. Markham's talking about. There's couches, there's trees, there's, there's barrels, there's old motors laying out there. It's, it's Old Denton Road and people have used Old Denton Road for a dump ground for years. I know they've put up with it, I know they went behind their house and picked stuff up, but is there any way that we could get by with running a maintainer through there? I don't mean push the railroad track or over, I think, I'm just talking about putting, putting it right through the, the deal to make some water move.
I'm not, I'm not gonna authorize it. I, I don't feel comfortable. I'm, I'm very aware of the, the railroads. I, I think it's gonna make it a little bit more difficult in the future when we go by and we, we wanna reshape the channel and do it more thorough and they come out and find out that we've been there before. I think that may put us in a bad situation, but I think general cleanup, no, I don't think you need a permit for that, but I think when you're talking about getting equipment like a maintainer or a grade all or things like that nature, I, I think it would be in our best interest to get a permit.
I'm not talking about major earth moving, I'm talking about major trash moving. There's a lot of debris back there. I don't know if you've been, I, I assume that you've been back behind there.
Yes.
But there's a lot of debris behind those houses in between that street and the railroad track and it just continues to mount up and, uh, I, I feel like if we could get some of that obstruction out of there, that Mr. Smith's house might not, you know, flood every time it rains.
Well, that's just how we need to explain it to the railroad when we go and get their permission.
All right, you're saying we can go in there... All right, you're saying we can go in there anytime that we have the men available to take out trash?
Well, I-
To do anything more than that, you're more comfortable, or we need to talk with the railroad?
Well, when you're talking about manual labor, walking through-
Right.
Maybe with pick or something, picking up trash, that's one thing. But when you're talking about getting, you know, a huge piece of equipment like a maintainer, I think-
No, I was talking about like the couch, the sofas, couches-
Oh, yes.
Motors and stuff like that.
Who mows that? That's a good question.
Nobody, I-
Does the railroad just get away with not mowing theirs?
Yes.
Sure, they sure do. Mm-hmm.
They don't mow it very often, I can tell you that.
I think Mr. Slovac can tell you, he's called the railroad numerous times every season, and-
Oh, yes.
He might be able to get them out once a season.
Which with motors and barrels and, and sofas and box springs and stuff they can.
No, they just go around those things.
No. Well, I'm representing community service out there and doing it by hand if we have to. Do it with a shovel and do it with a, just whatever it takes to get it picked up. We're supposed to have some dumpsters that we can take out and sit out when we need them, and that'd be a good place, that'd be a good place to, to start with, to put that dumpster out there, to show goodwill to these men.
Just go out there and clean up?
I want to do something pretty quick.
And maybe we could even get some folks from the neighborhood might join us and-
Now, I think that's an excellent idea.
And we'll do that.
The only reason I, I'm not real fond of the maintainer idea, even though you know and I know that that's all we're doing, you get someone from the railroad out there and they don't see it that way. And then it puts us in a bad spot in the future. And, and that's the reason that I'm not very fond of that idea.
It'd be a shame if one of the neighbors rented a maintainer when did that.
All of a sudden, I look down and the board looks like a Christmas tree. I don't know who was first, so I'll just start up here and come down. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Now, what I've been hearing is, is Barocker Street, Barock, can you say it?
You've just been hearing-
That people are fed up with. It's a shame, and you see who suffers. Is there any, and I'd like to ask the city manager, is there any type, I'd probably be told no, but it doesn't hurt to ask, any type of city emergency that the city can declare in a situation like this to, to do what it needs to do for a temporary relief?
Well, I, I think the question still goes back to, the railroad's going to have to say it's okay. Now, I think if we make the, the case that we got homes flooding every time it rains, they might be able to process this thing a whole lot quicker than thirty days, and we'll make every effort we can make to impress upon them how important this is. It hadn't rained in forty-five days, but it is going to rain again.
One of these days.
And, and September is a time of year that tends to start again, and we will do everything we can to speed that up. But I don't think that we can say we have an emergency and, and not get the approvals from the railroad. And if anything, the one thing I think we don't want to do is end up upsetting those folks enough that it takes even longer to get this thing processed through them. But I think we need to work within their parameters, but really emphasize to them how important this is to us, and this isn't just some work we'd like to do, this is a situation where people are getting damaged every time it rains.
Councilmember Hurley?
With the lack of any other action in, in view of Councilman Williams' suggestion, if he'd put that in form of motion, I'd second it, to put a community service group out there and do some routine cleaning for immediate relief. What we can do without legally compromising ourselves and with a lawsuit with the railroad.
And I'll work one day with them.
Oh, yeah.
I think we all will.
Yeah. Perhaps our volunteer service board-
You make that a motion?
Would join us.
Yeah, when she's ready for a motion, I'll make that in form of motion.
Councilmember Patino?
Oh, yes. It is my feeling that to give these people immediate relief, uh, if our city manager can find a way to start immediately or maybe as soon as possible on this, clean the creek, which eventually has to be done. And I feel that this area is where the proposed channel's going to be, and that's where Mr. Councilman Williams is talking about, he's got a couch and what have you. For one time, I went there and I even found some empty containers of highly toxic chemicals, which is very dangerous, especially for kids. I feel that once this is cleaned of debris, then I think that the city, I'm pretty sure they've got a bush hall, they can go out there and just mow it and clean it out. And I think this, this will carry the water a lot quicker, and it will give these people immediate relief until something more permanent can be taken care of.
Councilmember Henslerling?
Well, my question is kind of in line with Councilmember Markham's, and his was of urgency, mine is, would it do any good to pass a resolution from the council, present that to the railroad? Would that help expedite some of this?
Can't hurt.
Okay, so I'd probably suggest at the next council meeting, we have a resolution on the agenda.
If it's all right with the council, we can draft something up and take the position that you passed it tonight-
Great.
In principle, and then we can get it to them without waiting two weeks.
That's even, thank you.
Let's see if I understand this. What we're talking about right-of-way is to get some volunteers together and go out there and do as much as we can humanly do. And in the meantime, we're going to start the wheels rolling to get the railroad's attention. And we'll do the resolution. Can we do, can we do all of this? And then Saturday, Friday and Saturday, when we do budget, then we're going to look and see, we're going to consider this in our budget session. And my, does that sound right so far?
Sounds great.
Okay, okay.
Well, I won't make the day Saturday, this Saturday, since we have the budget on that.
No, we can't do it this Saturday.
Can we check with the secretary and see what the twenty-sixth of August looks like? Because that's the next available Saturday.
There's not anything scheduled. Then you're looking at a holiday weekend.
In a councilman's life, there is no holiday.
That would be Saturday, the twenty-sixth?
The twenty-sixth of August. I would urge everyone that's here, everyone via TV, and everyone that we can get out of the Halton Hilton over there, our jail, and I'm sure the majority of the council members and any staff that would like to do that, I'd make a motion that that Saturday would declare that a cleanup day, we'll start at eight AM. I would like to have an IESI dumpster out there. I would like to have, even though we can't use any equipment out there, I would like to have a tractor with a front-end loader for the stuff that is heavy, that the volunteers don't have to lift it over their head to put in there, that we can roll up on there.
Yeah, because all of us are a little elderly, you know.
Yeah, boy, Bob's getting on up there. But, and do I need to put the resolution in with it, Mr. Eisen, or you want to make that on a separate motion, or?
If you want to, if you want to include all that in one motion, we'll get the gist of it, I think.
I'm long-winded, so I can put it all in there.
Plus, plus what I just said about, you know, moving along, getting the permit-
Yes.
For the railroad.
Considering the mayor's comments-
Yeah.
And making the resolution to the railroad, that this is an emergency, because I want Mr. Markham, Mr. Smith, and the rest of the people up there to know that this council does care, and we'll be out there, if you'll get your neighbors to come with us that day.
Yeah, perhaps you-
I hate to have to ask you to do that.
Matter, matter of fact, I wanted, I wanted to ask, where is the, where's the property line stopped for the railroad? In the middle of the ditch?
Ask me that day.
It's in the ditch somewhere. See, we can, we can clean out to the middle of the ditch or wherever their property line stops clean and not, not interfere with any of their, any of what they're doing.
Can the engineer get us that by then, Bill? Can the engineer let us know where the property line is by then?
Has the surveying that's been done out there, Greg, would it, did it give you any indications as property lines?
Well, we didn't, weren't looking for that, but it, by next Saturday, I'm sure it could be put on the ground.
Okay. Just flagged off or staked off?
If we bring chainsaws, can we cut that timber down and the city will haul it off for us?
We'll have an IESI dumpster, and we'll fill it up. If we need another one, we'll get another one. That's cheaper than a quarter of a million dollars, but it is a start.
Anything, anything can be mentioned.
I don't know how much dumpster is, but I guess we can afford two of them, we're supposed to get some every once in a while.
They're free, though.
Well, that's a good bar, let's get two then.
That's a good price.
Yes. But that's in form of motion, I'd like to do that, and I'd like for everybody here via TV on the council and your neighbors to make this a city effort.
August twenty-sixth, eight AM. Councilmember Hurley?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Mr. Patino, do you have some discussion?
Well, I had a, I had a question-
Okay.
To ask you, if resolution only takes care of this channel, I took, where the president, five by five box under the railroad. Once we cleaned up, we're going to get the water to that point, and then what next? I would like to also add to that resolution that we try to clean that creek, because if we don't clean that creek, the water's going to stop right there by that four by five box. Greg, you, would you agree on that, or you disagree?
Yeah, that should be cleaned as well. What you have, what you see here as a-
The channel.
Right.
Okay, once we get it to the point of the box-
Mm-hmm.
Uh, press the box.
On the other side as well.
This is just a temporary thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, once we get the water there, we get everything cleaned, then we've got to get the water out there into the creek and, and move fast on that creek. And I would like to pass our manager, if in any way possible, that we can continue, if we clean this out, that somewhere in the very short future, we can continue cleaning that creek.
Yeah, the, the creek area is outside the railroad right-of-way, and I would think we could do that virtually anytime, it doesn't require any approval of any outside sources. But obviously, until what's between the creek and, and the homes is cleaned out a little bit too, which we're talking about doing in a week or so, it, it won't help much to clean the creek out till then. But, and I don't know how much good all this will do, but it certainly, it can't hurt, and it may actually help some, so. But yeah, I think we can certainly commit city crews to work in that creek area.
Whoever makes that motion, I would like to ask if people would consider to add that on.
Councilmember Williams did.
I would be glad to add that to that, Mr. Patino.
Mr. Hurley, is that okay for your second? All right, then we have a motion in a second. Council, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Mr. Markham, we'll get, we'll get you, your neighborhood fixed up if it's-
Thank you, Madam-
Thank you. Agenda item number twenty-five is consideration or action regarding conducting a citizens' academy, and Councilmember Henslerling put this on the agenda, so I will turn this over to Councilmember Henslerling.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is something that a lot of cities do, and I think it's been something that would be very beneficial for Halton City as well. We currently have what we call a citizens' police academy. It's a, it's a twelve-week course that citizens can go through, and essentially what you do is you learn one-hundred percent of what goes on at the PD, and it's a very informative class, and then there's an alumni association after that. And I was reminded, we've got one of those classes coming up in August, and I thought, you know, if we can do that for the PD, why couldn't we offer something to the citizens to discuss really many aspects of city government? And I provided some topics that I think would be beneficial for the citizens to come if they'd like to, to be informed and to give input on. Couple of them would be the city charter, the city organizations, the boards and commission structure. Maybe we're talking about four or five sessions, two to three hours a session, one session on the budget, people to come and listen to how, what we do in budget and how your dollars are being spent. I think that would be very informative for the citizens. The police department, spend a night on it, you know, fire, just, I've just thrown out these various top topics here, and what I'd like to do is just kind of give this, if it's the flavor of this council, just give it to the city staff and let them come up with a formal agenda, how many nights, what areas of the city would be covered, and, and do this after the budget sessions are done. This would be in the fall, in October, November timeframe. But hopefully, I think a lot of citizens out there want to be more informed about what's going on and what we do and learn more about our local government. So, I'd like to ask that this council approve giving staff a directive to come up with a program to accomplish these objectives.
Councilmember Hurley?
I've got a question of, Mr. Henslerling, is this for citizens or city staff?
It, it's for any and everybody. If there's some employees with the city, you'd like to know a little bit more about a particular part of the city, they'd be more than welcome to come.
Well, what I'm thinking, city employees, you've got over two hundred city employees, I don't know exactly how many, but you're looking at, at least four hundred man-hours, which would be, I think, kind of a, a waste of taxpayers' money in that respect. I think it'd be a good idea if you had a video program developed that people could check this, this thing out, if they wanted to find out about it. Have we had any inquiries from city staff?
Cities.
About other functions of the city?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Councilmember Avery?
Do we know how many, how many cities in Tarrant County normally provide this?
I know the city of Fort Worth has a class of this nature, and I've talked to our city secretary Helen Harris a little bit about it, and she's had some, I think, possible past experience with some cities that's done it, and-
So, basically, one in Tarrant County?
Do you remember her?
Carrollton did, is going through now.
Do you know what the turnout was for the city of Fort Worth?
Well-
The participation?
I have no idea.
No?
No.
Okay, so one city in Tarrant County normally participates, oh, okay, thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Patino?
Yes, I think his idea, Councilman Henslerling, I'm sure it's got a lot of merit to it. I would like to see if possible a survey of the citizens and see if we have any response, and if it's worth the time and effort, if that could be done.
Well, I, I agree, I, I do think it has a lot of merit because people really don't know what goes on behind the scenes. I don't know if they can find that out in a couple of hours for a few weeks, but the, the one thing that bothers me is that it seems lately we're having trouble filling the citizens' police academy, and the alumni is all but nonexistent because no one shows up. So, those two things concern me, along with the fact that we would be paying city staff, you know, to conduct these classes. I assume that's what you mean.
A department head.
Yeah, right.
Right.
So, those are the things that bother me, and, um, I, I don't know how, you couldn't really do a survey, I don't think, Mr. Patino, but I, I don't know how you would find out if there's any, maybe through a city newsletter. How about that?
That'd be great.
Maybe we could try that and see if there's, see what the interest is and have them respond. Yeah.
I, I think that's a great idea. In fact, one of the minimum requirements for the CPA to make is they have to have ten members before they make the class to make it worth, you know, the time-
Right.
For productive. And I'm not for using city dollars that don't need to be spent with our city staff. Our city staff has plenty to do, believe me, we all know that.
Right.
But I, I do think that if there's enough interest, I think it'd be an invaluable tool for people to come up and understand some of the particular things. And we've got a ten-million-dollar water budget and a ten-million-dollar general fund budget that we allocate, and I just think people would lack an opportunity to ask questions and give input, although the budget will be set at that point, but it'll be an informative tool for them, so. You know, yeah, I'd be willing to, I think a city newsletter article with a response card, a caller number, and RSVP, I think that'd be great.
Could we manage to get that in our next newsletter?
Certainly could. One just went out, so we'll look at it.
Right. Um, yeah, I think France said everything had to be to her, by September the twelfth. So, probably three weeks after that time, it should be out. So, we may have to look at maybe springtime, Gene, but that's better than late than ever, huh?
That's fine, maybe never, if there's no interest, so.
Yeah, okay. Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think everybody said exactly what I was going to say. I think it's a good idea. I don't have any problem with it. I, I do think that we need to, as you said, Mayor, I think we need to send out a response card in the newsletter to see what kind of response we do get. I don't know if ten is the magic number or not, but eight, twelve, whatever, whatever we get. But I think it's a good idea that people can see exactly how their tax dollars are spent. I don't have any problem with it, and I think it would go good. And, and I hope we're surprised, and I hope we have a good, good response to it. That's all I have.
I know most leadership classes that I've been involved with in the past, it's usually 25. Because more than that, it's just too much, and anything under that, it usually doesn't pay.
Yeah.
But that's kind of something to keep in mind.
That sounds like a good number to me.
Yeah. Councilmember Williams?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Along with the fellow councilmembers, I would have agreed this is an excellent idea. I'd like to see in the survey that we send out on the city newspaper, maybe kind of break them down into some brackets and see where the interest is and see where the interest is not. And like Councilmember Hurley said, a lot of times, there's a lot of people that watch this cable TV channel, and many times, I know that Mr. Eisen's wife has taught some computer classes on, and I've caught myself watching that and learning stuff I didn't know about the computer. And you can do that at your own leisure, as you catch it on TV. And then also, like Mr. Hurley said, you know, if you could check out the tapes, or if our library could provide a, you know, we have a nice meeting room there, and if there was, you know, 10, 15, 25 people want to do that, maybe someone could go in there, play the video, let them watch it, and if there was any questions, they'd be there to answer the questions. And I think it'd be a whole lot better on our city staff is to have to have someone to instruct each class. But I think the first tool is to find out who's interested, and if there is a need, then we'll proceed with that.
All right.
That's in form of a motion. I'll let it make its own.
I don't know that we, do we need a motion just to have you put this in the newsletter and find out what's happening? Yeah, we're okay?
I think I'd have to agree.
Right, okay. Then we'll proceed along to agenda item number 26. Mr. Henselain.
Well, I put item 26 on the agenda because, for a couple of reasons. One, I'm a little unclear in city attorney and city secretary, and city manager maybe can clarify for me. When we're appointing some of these ad hoc committees, for instance, the charter, the ethics, the crime control district study tax, is it automatic that those committees fall under our standard rules and ordinances for boards and commissions? And that's probably directed toward city attorney, I guess, would be best. Sorry, Bill. Well, you can jump in if you want.
I'll take a stab at it. You do have a general boards and commissions ordinance that you've adopted previously that provides some guidelines for the appointment and some of the procedures that the boards are supposed to follow, and it lists particular boards that it applies to, and it does make some exceptions for ad hoc committees in the ordinance itself. I don't know that you have any general rules or guidelines that you've established for those types of boards. I'm not familiar with any of that stuff. I don't believe they're set forth in your ordinance that you've adopted in the past, so I don't know that, to answer your question, if there is anything that's in your codebook currently that's going to pertain to guidelines or procedures that these ad hoc committees would follow.
The second part of my comment on this topic is, we talked about way back when, when we, I guess initially started the charter review committee, we talked about kind of a, we were going to try to develop some rules of order for these committees, and thought that that might be, there might be a need for that sort of thing. And, you know, I don't want to create a bunch of new rules and a bunch of new restrictions. I don't want to, in any way, form or fashion, limit the power that our committees have in what they're doing, but I think it's important that we have some consistency. And to make sure I'm clear, Wayne, did you say that those ad hoc committees would fall under the ordinances that we have for our boards and commissions? For instance, as far as one example, and this is a bad example, the terms, you know, associated with that appointee coincide with the term of that council member, that sort of thing? All those ad hoc committees don't last that long typically, but that's just one facet of it?
Councilmember Henselain, I'm going from memory here of your code. I haven't looked at it in a while, but my recollection is that it applies to certain boards and commissions that are listed in that chapter of the ordinance, and it specifically exempts ad hoc committees. And we're using that term loosely, but if it is truly an ad hoc committee that's not listed as being one of the regularly meeting committees or commissions or boards that the city council was created, then it would not be subject to those provisions.
What would be the problem with adding ad hoc to an example of, you know, adding it to the list of boards and commissions?
You might clarify for me what types of guidelines you're looking at establishing for these boards.
Me too.
I'm not sure that adding that to the codebook is going to resolve your issues.
Well, I'm not trying to alleviate any particular issues, I'm just trying to, you know, we have, what we have is we have a structure for boards, no, we have a structure for boards and commissions, and it's pretty well laid out, some general guidelines for those boards and commissions. There's a whole section in our ordinance.
As far as appointments to those?
Appointments, just various parts of...
Attendance?
Attendance, yeah, if you miss for three months, that sort of thing. And what I'm saying, we've got these ad hoc committees that we're doing a lot of, which are good, but there's no, they don't fall under anywhere in any of ordinances. And I'm just trying to find a home for them in our ordinances, so if someone doesn't attend three meetings and something needs to be done about it, right now, we have no recourse to deal with that. And I think it just makes good sense, and it's consistent, to include it into our ordinances that deal with those things. Do you see a problem with that?
No, I don't see a problem. I think that's a council prerogative. If that's something you want to do, you certainly can do that.
Okay. So that's kind of where I was going with this, is I don't want to create any new rules for these committees. I don't want to, you know, restrict them or anything. I just want to find a home for them in our books so that we all know, us as a council and as a staff and as a committee, you know, the parameters or the general guidelines by which they operate.
Do you think the general guidelines under which the boards and commissions operate are going to accomplish what it is that you're wanting to accomplish?
Sure.
Okay.
I have no problem with that. I'm just looking for a home for them and some structure versus, I think we have some... I don't say that, I don't want to create any liability out there, but if we don't have any general guidelines for these committees, there's no telling what kind of circumstances that we might get into. I'm just trying to preempt anything that might happen. You know, I don't know what the council, when we talked about this, was talking about or their intent was regarding rules of order, because the rules of order part of the conversation came up because we had committees that were voting maybe more than once on a particular item. And we said, as a council, we'd like to give some of these committees some direction, say, "Don't vote on things unless maybe some new information is added to the discussion. Don't continue to vote on things, only if it's productive." And that's a kind of a general guideline or a rules of conduct that I'd like to add.
Well, I think that we all felt like we, maybe by not having some of those guidelines, the charter review committee worked a lot longer than they thought they were going to have to.
And harder.
As a, for instance.
Exactly. And that's what I want to preempt. If it would have been, only could have been brought up because of new information was added to discussion, or they learned something new that made them reconsider or whatever, that would be the only instance which you could reconsider an item, so.
Okay, I've got a light on, let's see what happens. Councilmember Williams?
Well, I know what he said, like to find a home for everything. We did this on zoning, trying to find a home for everything on that too, and we didn't quite complete that, but on the, on this, if, I guess one of the things Councilmember Henselain was talking about is the ethics committee that was just established. I feel if we go too far beyond our bounds there, that we're kind of directing this committee to do what we want to do. And I think we want this committee to do what the city wants them to do, and, you know, to adopt us an ethics committee to go by. And I don't know, I think when we first start one of these things, I think maybe Mr. Eisen and you go in there and sort of get them started, and y'all excuse yourself, and they go on their own, is that true?
Well, city manager is there for every meeting. I just attend the first one.
You just go in and introduce yourself, introduce everybody, and then you're out, and that way, all the council is out and not a part of that. And I think on this ethics, I think everyone will basically stay away from there and let these gentlemen do their job. I think we've all picked, you know, very ethical men to choose for us, and I have a lot of faith in them and whatever they present to us. I feel like they're going to do it in the best interest of Holton City. And I would hate to put any guidelines on them or any extra rules that might belittle them or make them feel like, you know, they're being pressured into any kind of situation.
I do agree with the attendance factor, most definitely.
And that should be.
There should be three meetings.
Ad hoc committees, regardless of the fact that they're ad hoc, should have some sort of attendance requirements. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't believe that we hold any committee in Holton City responsible that they follow Robert's Rules of Orders. You know, we don't do it here. The mayor is the person that runs the meeting. I feel like that the chair of each individual committee should be responsible for the way the meetings are run. But I do have to agree with Gene in that you must have some type of order, you must have some type of structure, and I don't have a problem at all with mandating that, not necessarily ad hoc committees, but I don't see how it would hurt us to go back and clarify to all of the committees in Holton City that there are certain things that as a city we require them to do. As far as, a good example he made would be taking a vote more than once. If new information is brought up, well, then I would expect them to do so. I would also expect them to cover it to the best of their ability the first time through. But here again, the chair of that particular committee would be responsible for that. I have no problem with adding an ad hoc committee to the rules that are in existence for standing boards and commissions. I don't see any problem with that. Nothing is to be gained at all from leaving them out there on their own without any guidance. I don't see that being fair to them at all. I think that possibly the way that we've been doing it in the past, as far as having the city manager there, having the mayor there to kick off the meeting or whatever, I think that's good. All of these committee and commission meetings are subject to the Texas Open Meeting laws, and they have to be held in a certain manner, they have to post an agenda. But here again, it's the responsibility of the chair of that committee to oversee that meeting, and I know I'm the liaison of Planning and Zoning Commission, and our chair, Mr. Worthington, does a very admirable job of overseeing those meetings. And I'm certainly not saying that any of the other chairs in Holton City are not doing an admirable job, but some questions have arisen as to who can vote on a committee, who can't vote, you know, what is the, what is the position of a liaison or a representative from, say, the school board to a particular committee? I think those things need to be cleared up. This in itself is certainly not a bad thing, and I understand the need for the structure, and I agree 100% with Gene on that. How we go about doing that, I don't know what the best way is to do it, but if we're going to do something for ad hoc committees, I think it would be a very good time to go back and look at existing boards and commissions and maybe go back over with them, you know, the rules that we would like to see this dug by. But then you have to give them the ability and the latitude to do your job, to do their job that you're asking them to do, so I don't see it being a problem at all.
Councilmember Henselain?
Well, I was just going to, there was a couple of things said, and I'm glad to hear that Councilmember Jennings kind of feels the same way I do on this. I don't think by adding these ad hoc committees is in any way imposing any more restrictions on the committees than we already have right now, so we're not limiting them any more than they already are limited, which is pretty unlimited. So I don't think it's going to change the dynamic, I don't think it's going to affect them, it's just going to bring them into the fold. And I would like to, another thing I'd like to add to it, and it was mentioned by a couple of councilmembers, as far as how we as a council on these ad hoc committees, these ad hoc committees are special committees. They come, they're enacted and organized for six to eight months, then they do their task, and then they go away, sort of thing. And Councilmember Williams had said that it might be good that the mayor go, maybe at the initial meeting, and of course, city manager will be at all the meetings, and city secretary is typically at all the meetings as well, and then let the council, we kind of had this discussion in pre-council one time, just let the committee do their work without any attendance or influence from the council. And I, maybe for just the ad hoc part of the ordinance that we add to this, I'd like to maybe include that verbiage if this council is agreeable to doing that. So with that, I'm talked out on this particular item.
Anyone else?
What I've heard, Mayor, from each individual council member, I agree with, I agree with Councilmember Jennings that the structure is needed for one and all. And I think it's something that I'd like to see drafted and see what it looks like.
Would someone like to put that in the form of a motion? Councilmember Henselain would?
May I, Madam Mayor? I'd just like to make a motion that we instruct staff to revisit our ordinance regarding boards and commissions and draft it in such a way that it would include ad hoc committees into the overall boards and commissions ordinance, and also add some verbiage regarding ad hoc committees about the council's role in those ad hoc committees. And that's my motion.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to second that motion, but I would like to ask that we include a little instruction to staff, possibly about reviewing with existing boards and commissions what we would consider to be a standard set of procedural rules, say, for how, you know, those meetings should be conducted. I don't know if this needs to be part of this, or it can just be made as instructing to staff, that'd be up to you, Gene.
I'm certainly agreeable to that as well.
Okay. I have a motion in a second, please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 27, appointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any appointments this evening? Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have one appointment to the Crime District Study Committee. I'd like to submit the name of Florence Gwynne, 2908 Corson.
Thank you. Councilmember Henselain?
I have an appointment to the Ethics Commission, and that's Mr. John Booker, and I've previously given the name and address and phone number to the city secretary.
And council has an appointment at large this evening for Economic Development Corporation Board, and that would be Tracy Henderson. And I believe you probably have his address from the other one. Anything else, council? Let's ratify those appointments, please, and they are passed. We have no absences, so at this point, pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, council will now recess to executive session, section 551.071 and 551.073 at 9:17.